Committee member Escue. Committee member Whipple.
Here.
Chair Savano. Committee member Lyman. Yeah.
Okay, James Coleman. Okay. Congratulations. So raise your right hand and then repeat after me. Aye.
Aye. James Olmert.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah? You want to take a seat? Well, I'll just do a quick report on it. Most of you are probably familiar, but it's been almost a year, I think, since we've talked about it. So just for purposes of refreshment. Okay, so as you know, this committee meets here at City Hall on an annual basis, no later than two months following the prior fiscal year audit being accepted by the City Council. And so for 1617, just last night, the City Council accepted the audit, something called a CAFR, a Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. If you don't know, it's the first time in Catati that we've done that. And I told Normie couldn't talk about it tonight because we would never go home. But it's a very impressive document. It contributed to this massive council packet we had last night, which the council loved. So anyway, so they received it last night, so we're immediately following on the heels of that. And then the duties of the committee, as outlined in the City Council resolution, are that the Measure G Advisory Committee will review the revenue and expenses from Measure G, review the audit of the independent auditor, which there's a summary statement in the Measure G report from the independent auditor that summarizes the Measure G expenses and revenues, provide the council with a written report. And again, there's a template, which we'll talk about later, that's in the back, that you can use as the basis for that. And then also provide direction, any direction to staff on the issues of community education, on fiscal issues and outreach pursuant to the oversight committee duties. And then just a reminder that these are open meetings, subject to the Brown Act, and we broadcast these meetings on the web and they're archived there as well. And just for reference, the resolution of formation for the Oversight Committee is attached to the staff report, as well as the open, this guide to the Brown Act, Open and Public Version 4, although I believe the clerk distributed the Version 5, which just came out hot off the presses.
I did. Version 5 should be on your diet.
Yeah. They're almost sold out when it came out, but but we managed to get copies for you guys. Yeah. So don't leave it around. Take it home. All right, so that's it unless there's any questions. Just as way of background. Okay, thanks. Thank you. So every year, the City Council does strategic planning. And for fiscal year 1617, the primary goals are laid out in the packet. So it has the goals and objectives laid out, and that's the comprehensive goals and objectives. And it's followed by where we ended up with each department in terms of ongoing duties and projects that were the focus for fiscal year 1617. And also, I will say that in the discussions with the council during strategic planning, there was a real focus on two things. One was economic development, and the other was public information and communication. And so with respect to economic development, there was a continuing goal to identify key markets, emerging markets, review zoning and all sorts of kind of nuance, a variety of things that I get on the rabbit hole on. But, you know, a lot of things related to our zoning, sort of tax change, you know, tax structure and fee structure, removing barriers to key development sites, and revenue diversification. Because as you might know, a lot of Catati's revenue is derived from sales tax. And so some, you know, some key outflows from that, although it flowed into, you know, this current fiscal year is, you know, with the cannabis business tax that you're all aware of, which is a local tax. It's a revenue diversification measure. There's also with respect to lodging, transit occupancy tax. So again, that's just another way to it's been a high priority of the council to broaden the base of revenue. Because if it's all, if you're so heavily dependent on sales tax, it's great while the economy's doing well. But it drops precipitously when the economy is not doing so well. And so it's hard to manage and provide all the ongoing services you need to do, you know, the public safety services, paving streets, maintaining parks, and so forth. So broadening that base of revenue just provides more stability. So that's fundamentally what they were focused on. And with respect to the individual departments, I will just say that some of the and I'll just go quickly through a couple departments. And like I mentioned, there's a lot of different things in here that are day-to-day duties that take up a significant amount of time. And then we have, you know, some amount of capacity for new projects. And with respect to the Police Department, the focus really has been on enhancing traffic and pedestrian safety, as well as community outreach. And you've probably all seen that in a variety of ways, both coffee with a cop, which we're doing pretty regularly now, and also, you know, the traffic officer assignment, which we turned on after Measure G, but it's an ongoing program. We just started doing a bicycle cop, although I think you mostly see them in the summertime. It's too cold in the winter to go out on a bicycle, I guess. But there's also the Parent Project, which we're running here. I think even maybe tonight. Yeah, right. Which is a, it's a project to help families that have children that are having issues and trying to help them solve those issues. Yeah, right, as well as like National Night Out. And there's a variety of different things that are police-specific, but also all of our other events they're attending. And we've had a real focus on sort of neighbor, you know, more neighborhood patrols, some new traffic measures, you know, crosswalks and lighted stop signs and things like that. So and radar feedback signs. So you're seeing these things pop up around town. Those are all part of the focus in the Police Department. And then with Public Works, it was really focusing on some of our big grant projects, getting those done, which are the Old Road Highway projects, where the primarily, or primary big grant projects. That's Old Road Highway here at the Gateway down to the park and then through Old Downtown, the new paving there. The Kater Field sidewalks, so some accessibility projects. And that included new sidewalk in La Plaza, by La Plaza Park, and up to Olaf Street on West Catati, as well as the design piece of what just got built out here on Kater, completing that sidewalk gap. And and then finally, I would say that there's a variety of just general pavement work going on that the nature of these Public Works projects is they tend to go from one year to the they kind of blend between years often, just the way construction seasons and design cycles go. But those are all ongoing. And then with community development, it was really focusing on some of these economic development initiatives, including you know, one of the things I got, that got done in 1617, which was a big deal, was our fee deferral program. So when development builds, typically how it works is they have to pay impact fees. And these are the fees to mitigate the impacts of the development. And they're one-time fees that they pay at the time of development. And typically, those are paid when, like a developer would pull a building permit. And the fee deferral program is just a, it's a program that allows them to pay that fee once the project, once the structure, say like a house, is built, but before it's sold to a buyer. So it defers that fee. So the fee's still collected. The city still gets that money when the impacts actually occur, which is when the building gets used. But it helps, it really helps financially to get, you know, get things going. And so like the Village Walk Development on East Catati at Lancaster took advantage of that impact fee program, and I expect some others will too. But it really helps the financing work and gets those housing units built. So community development also was heavily involved in the, you know, the post Prop 64 cannabis discussions and having those public workshops and getting, you know, community feedback on what, you know, what the community wants. And that resulted in a ballot measure, which I think you all know, went to voters here in Catati in November for the cannabis business tax. And then Admin Services, they've been busy with if you've seen our budget that was adopted for 1718, but we did it in 1617, it was a huge improvement over prior budgets in terms of the narratives and helping describe what is in the budget and what it all means. And really with the end goal of making it just more transparent and hopefully more accessible to people. That, I mean, most people don't deal with municipal finance or, you know, municipal budgets. And so they look at it and it's greased to them and it's not that, it's dense and not that accessible. So it's continuing this process of making, trying to make them more accessible, make them more understandable, and you don't have to be an accountant, you know, to understand them. And the same would go for the CAFR that I mentioned earlier. It provides a lot more information than just the general financial audit does. And it wraps, so we have our even though this blends into 1718, this CAFR project that Norm's working on, it was for the 1617 finances. And up until now, we've always done a basic financial audit, which is the requirement for any government to do on all of its funds. And that's fine, but you really need to be an accountant to understand what it all means. Because it's not that, you know, it's not that clear if you don't really know what you're looking at. I mean, who the hell knows what, you know, net position means and, you know, all the other stuff. So the CAFR takes that basic financial audit and wraps it in 10 years of statistical information, as well as a bunch of narrative that describes what it is that you're looking at, and hopefully points out what's important. I mean, there's a lot of stuff in there, a lot of financial information, most of which is really not that relevant to the city's overall financial condition. You know, a lot of it's just sort of, you know, minor funds that don't really have any significant effect on anything, but they take up space in the financial audit. So it's really trying to focus people's attention and understanding on the things that matter and hopefully make it more understandable. So that's something that Norm's been working on. That's the Cliff Notes version for you. I'll spare you all his longer discussion. It's extremely interesting, but but anyway. So that's, you know, that's where we're going, you know, in 1617 is really economic development, public information in terms of, you know, Norm's department, it was the budget and the CAFR, but also continuing the utility newsletter mailers that have, you know, every two months you see what's going on, what's the main things going on. And we also, I think you probably know, started up a Facebook account in 1617, as well as Nextdoor, and we're continuing to do Nixle. So we're really trying to get, you know, factual information, good information out so that people have access to that if they're interested. And I will also say, although this hasn't actually gone live yet, we've been through 1617 and it's come into 1718 a little bit. We've been working on our updated city website to take something that's fairly antiquated and not really that mobile-friendly and make it much more modern and mobile-friendly. So I expect that by the end of this calendar year, or in January at the latest, that'll go live. So again, just to provide all this information. And and that's really kind of it in a nutshell, but, you know, that's what the council wanted us to work on and that's what we were focused on in 1617. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer that on what the council's goals were. Okay, great. So Sure, yeah. If there's, it sounds like there's no questions on strategic planning, so we can just, yeah, we could if the chair wishes, we could move to the next item, Measure G report. Okay, so just real briefly, the Measure G report is attached. And the highlights of it are that we received, in Measure G revenue, we received about $2.1 $2.1 million in total revenue. And the this is on Packet Page 8. There's a graphic that shows how, by program, how the revenue was split. So 36% went to the Streets Sidewalk and Storm Drain Program, which we can talk about in more detail if we want. 35% went to the Public Safety Program, 6% to REC Program, which is now up and running. Park and Landscape Program, 12%, and the Public Building Program is 11%. And in the report, there's a summary of what happened, the details in each one of those programs, as well as a map, as requested when it was last year by the Oversight Committee, of where these projects were. And then on Page, Packet Page 107 through 109, again, that's just the ongoing kind of running list of things that have happened since the inception of Measure G. And then back on Packet Page 111, it breaks it down, not by program, but by operations and maintenance versus capital. So operations and maintenance was about 60%, capital was about 40% since inception to today. And then the state takes a small administrative fee, a little bit over a half percent. And finally, I'll just point out that this Packet Page 115 is the independent auditor statement of the revenues received and expenditures. And rather than give you the 200-page CAFR, this is, which goes over the entire city finances, this is the part that's relevant. So to make it simple, related to Measure G. And I already spoke about the projects when we talked about strategic planning, but I'd be happy to go into any more detail on anything that's in here, so. Right, it was mostly the gateway and then downtown paving, in terms of capital, right? I'm sorry, the solid waste, which Oh, yeah, okay. So that's a day-to-day duty of the city manager's office. And so the city, all the cities and the county and the city Catati is no different. Franchises, their solid waste service. And currently, as you know, it's Redwood Empire Disposal. Actually, at the meeting last night, the council consented to the assignment of that franchise from Redwood Empire Disposal to a company called Recology that's taking over Redwood Empire Disposal's assets in Sonoma County. Oh, yeah. Yeah, sorry about that. So what this, the effect of FTE, that's government speak. So FTE is full-time equivalent positions, so bodies. So the percent there next to it, the .01 is .01, basically percent, you know, part of a person. Yeah. Yeah. No, so it if you, well, so the first time, the first year we did the Measure G report, the building official, they were hired shortly after Measure G, because we used to have a contract, part-time building official. They were in the public safety category. And they just got moved to this category last year. And it's just, I guess, a question of categorization. But the expense is the same as it was before. It was, so the building official was intended to, you know, for public safety, it was intended for public safety, because a building official doesn't inspect public buildings. So maybe it's a bit of a miscategorization, but the building official was out inspecting private buildings for building safety. And that's the role of the building official. Correct. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I mean, if, we can switch it back to that category next year, if that's the will of the committee.
Right.
Yeah, so I mean, that'd be absolutely no problem to bolster the language there to really describe what they're doing, so.
But I also think with a percentage spent, that it's 11% of the entire funding, of only 6% going towards recreation. To me, the marketing of Measure G was pretty clear about public safety and recreation and the top two lines. So it really didn't deal as much with, I mean, it did a little bit with parks. I mean, I understand parks is part of recreation, so that kind of makes sense. But public building program just doesn't quite hit that marketing perspective of what I think people are looking for. That's just my opinion. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, or maybe I agree with your perception of just local based value. I think, for me, I think kind of combining parks and recreation. I put it ahead of that, and it's a percentage. But actually, I'm just saying, if you draw some answer, that the focus is still there. And that's on, I have to remind you more closely. I kind of need to, maybe put them back together and call them out separately.
I agree with that, combining them back there. It's good to focus really on, covering back the recreation department.
Combine, you mean combine the building?
No, the parks and landscape with recreation.
Oh. Right.
So for categorization, we're going to be combining the two as one.
Well, yeah, you can say parks and recreation, eighteen percent. And then you can break it out, and you got parks and landscape, and then it's twelve, and recreation is six. But that's still, I mean, for me, I would like it to be more than six percent or more than eighteen percent.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I mean, they're, in, it's kind of a, yeah. It's the way that the budget is, you know, segregated. But it's artificial. In real life, it's all kind of the same thing. So I understand the point, okay. So combining the parks and rec categories. And then with the building official, just maybe adding more detail there or combining that with the safety?
Well, safety, you're inspector, you're the work inspector. So people know that it goes to public safety. When she pointed out the station, I was down. I'm like, oh my god, we were, the measure wasn't meant to pay for buildings. I think that you say it's for inspectors, actually.
And that's how it was presented on the first year of the Measure G is that the building inspector was actually combined with public safety. It was only the second year that we moved this category into a separate category.
I agree with you in such a category. It's the phonetic, the language that you have. Because looking at this, the person saw this, and I didn't know what you guys explained to us. Wait a minute, this measure's paying for buildings. We didn't, you know, we didn't have the capacity to pay for buildings.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be, I mean, we absolutely could add that language there to make it clearer what that is and what it's for. Yeah.
That's more family stuff. It's definitely more, you feel that it's kind of more family than, or if we're still, we're still family. And that's, that's just too large. I think that was one that comes back to us.
Yeah, well, it's coming up this Friday, as you probably know. So it's going to be even bigger this year.
As long as the policy can be and realize that you are a little understanding of the need for the process.
Thank you.
See, other comments? So we're supposed to send a letter to the council that we're going to, that we're going to establish the transfer of the city's proposed letter? Is there any, is there a motion that we have to provide? Or is it, actually, it's longer?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the proposed letter to send to the city council regarding the annual Measure G report.
Okay.
First and second, please, say aye.
Aye.
Close?
All right, thank you. It used to be done at seven thirty. Yeah, that was great.